Jamie, all right, good. I don't really have to gab a listen for this particular thing. So we'll get started. The Westbrook School Committee Finance Committee meeting for Wednesday, March 9th. Welcome, everybody. And we'll get started right in. We'll jump right in. Dr. Harajones, if you want to get us going.
Absolutely. Actually, do you want me to project the numbers? Or do you want? You have them in front of you. Would you prefer I project them as well?
Yeah, sure. It can't hurt.
Might as well.
Technology.
Yeesh, witch's style. They're all gone. Oh, there they are. Look at that. Um, hold on. Oh, great, okay. Sorry about all my tabs and messy backdrop here.
That's okay.
See if I can clean that up for the next one. All right, so here are the standard monthly report that I send you guys. We're about at the midpoint of the school year. And you'll notice we are about at the midpoint of our expenditures, forty-nine percent, which feels pretty right on. You'll notice, and actually, this will come up a little bit when you look in your budget books, you'll notice that the school committee is overspent. That's not anything you guys did. It's totally okay. It was a budgeting issue last year having to do with insurance. One of the adjustments we made to the school budget is readjusting a couple of things. And one was our insurance rates to match what the actuals are as opposed to, I don't know, they just hadn't been changed very much over too much time.
Can you explain that again? What do you mean by the insurance rate?
So we carry insurance, and this is not health insurance. This is insurance for property liability. Trying to think, just sort of the standard things that organizations carry insurance for. It's kind of the thing that paid for the fire. One of the lines is in the finance department, actually. There's a bunch of lines through the district depending on what the insurance is. The school committee's the school committee's number on that hadn't been adjusted in quite some time. And I think that was sort of the problem with that. So I made an adjustment in our current budget for that to match what our projected is for the year.
So you're saying we spent money out of our
If you want to, like, bring the microphone down. There you go.
We spent. So we had an Can you bring that back up?
I don't know, can we? Is it on my end? Oh, it might be. There might be a clip. Yep, it's coming back up.
I just want to see for a second.
Maybe not. There it is. Yes.
Okay, so we budgeted a hundred and two thousand dollars, right? And you're saying that some of that of twelve thousand was insurance?
If you're looking at the school committee line, which was the one below technology, your spent to date is, you're over by twelve thousand five ninety-three seventy-six. And the reason for that really was just, it was a budgeting issue last year in terms of carrying the right amount in that line. And so one of the things I did when we created the budget is look at what we had carried for a bunch of lines to make sure that they were accurate.
Where's the offset? If you took it from here and you made the correction, where's the offset?
You're talking, where did we, where did we, where did we take the money from?
Right, if you have one entry, you have to have an offset someplace else.
It came, it basically comes from the general fund. Lines often will get overspent as a result of the other one, I think that'll be a really good example of that. Well, actually, there's going to be a couple of those would be our tuition reimbursement, which is another item that we adjusted this year so that we don't run into those issues moving forward.
And the auditors did not catch that?
I'm sorry?
The auditors never caught that error?
No, no, it's not that they don't catch it. They absolutely, they absolutely know that that happens. That's part of, in fund balance accounting, that happens because everything has its own little pocket. And what we know about a budget is, a budget is an expectation of what we're going to spend, but not a guarantee of what we're going to spend. Because again, it's hard to know. And a great example of that would be our utilities expenses, which I'm going to talk about a little bit later tonight. Again, I paid ninety-one dollars and fifty-one cents for my, to fill my tank today. My budget did not have a hundred bucks this week for gas. But I didn't imagine gas was going to go up a dollar.
So what it is, Noreen, if I may restate it a different way, is that in that one hundred, or our original budget amount, we hadn't budgeted appropriately for that twelve thousand five ninety-three. They're in different line items. It should have been spread out. So it's not that we over drew the account to spend that. He's just changed it to take that, show those funds coming out of that account.
Yeah, but I would like to see the offset to that. I don't want it to see, here's my journal entry on this one half of it. I'm sorry, it's the accounting in me. When I see a document like that, I want to see the offset. Where is the other entry coming from? Do you understand what I'm saying? If you made a correction in one account, another account had to be corrected.
So, so these actually aren't even accounts. These are cost centers. And each cost center has a series of lines in them. And in those lines, there are places where we don't go over budget and there are places where we do. Because in the end, our budget is really just our expectation of what we're going to spend on that particular thing. Copy paper, for example, is another good example that because of supply chain issues and supply issues has gone up considerably in price. So what we would have budgeted in what we have. Now, the responsibility is to make sure that we don't go over budget. And that's part of what this spreadsheet helps us do is, one, project out sort of our encumbrances and look at what we have remaining to make sure that we, that we don't go into the red.
Correct.
So it's not that we, again, not that we spent twelve thousand five hundred on a specific thing. It's that this, these lines are showing like what we originally budgeted, the monthly expenses and year-to-date, but that he's taken out twelve thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars that wasn't allocated correctly.
Right, that's why I'm saying, if it wasn't allocated correctly, where was it allocated to?
So
You have a due-to, due-from in accounting. To make an
That would be in, that would be in business accounting. When we're talking about different departments, you do the due-to, due-from in order to balance each department and know where it's coming from. In fund balance accounting, that is, that doesn't need to be done. And we've, in our last year's budget, if you look at it, there are quite a few lines, like I said, that were overspent, including the insurance lines. The, the insurance lines, the tuition reimbursement lines. Trying to think what else has sort of been the perennial ones. And one of the things I think we have responsibility to do is right-size those lines so that we work hard not to have anything go beyond the budget.
Okay.
Any other questions on that particular line? For the expenses? Okay.
All righty, and common educational expenses. Substitute lines have been not really hit as hard as we normally would for probably two really big reasons. One is that we have moved towards this idea of bench subs or common subs, which has been a really great educational addition, I think, in our schools. The other, quite frankly, is it's hard to find subs. We're doing a lot of coverage and a lot of that sort of thing. So these lines aren't exactly getting spent down. The special education line of two thousand six hundred and three dollars, actually, there's going to be an encumbrance coming up pretty soon. So that one looks like it's all great, but there'll be some expenses coming from that as well. The utilities, this is the last time you're going to enjoy looking at the utilities one. Currently, at our utilities, we're looking pretty A-OK. You'll, you'll, you'll notice, though, that, let's see, for January, some of the expenses are up. If you recall, and in my next presentation, I'll talk a little bit about this. If you recall, in, when I came on board, and I'll, I'll explain this a little more, a lot of our utilities came off of long-term contracts, which are important and good things for us to have. I brought that to you guys in November to talk a little bit about some of the decisions we can make around that. But they came off of long-term contracts. And we have some pretty hefty utility bills as a result of some of the things that are going around, both because of the second Omicron spike there and because of what's going on right now with the war in Ukraine.
Can you go back a page real quick?
Absolutely.
Under books and supplies, special, special education
Yeah.
It shows nothing's been spent on that.
Well, so special education, and that's the line that's a little funny. Thank you for asking. I probably should have explained that better.
I just kind of caught it as you
Yeah, no, it is. It sticks out like a sore thumb. So that special education line, most special education books and supplies come from the general fund, but not specifically earmarked for special education. They come out of the, the school's budget. And then some additional funds come out of some of the, I want to make sure I'm right about this. I'm not entirely sure. It's funded, it's funded appropriately, but not as an earmarked special headline. And, and that line is, was kind of funny because I had a conversation with Kelly Fogg just the other day about that because she had an expense and she wanted to know where to charge it, that was not a specific building expense. And that's why I said there's going to be something encumbered on that, I think, next month or the month, or in the next report.
Thank you.
Yeah, that does stand out, though. And then the last one is the enterprise account. Enterprise accounts basically are the accounts that are, we expect to create revenue. You'll notice in the first one, school nutrition, during the month of January, we actually had a huge surplus, maybe, or whatever. Some of this has to do with when funds are encumbered and when we receive revenues. But in, during the month, they were thirty thousand dollars in the black. I think the better and more important thing to see here is that on the year, they're forty-three thousand dollars in the black. And why that's kind of germane is if we look at the years of running net losses, if we project the rest of the year, and again, I want to be careful. If we project the rest of the year and we go just as we're going, your, your safe bet would be that we're going to end in the black. What's really even cooler about that is you'll see up top that a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars was budgeted to support that fund. That is not included in the revenues in the calculations on the bottom. That's additional funds out of, out of the general fund to support our food services program. If you recall from the auditor's report, this was one of the areas that had gone into debt over time, and this is part of our debt remediation strategy. And again, it appears, well, we appear to be doing very well. I know that our, our food services director is a very frugal person with funds and finds grants and that sort of thing. Plus, again, we, again, there's a few things having to do with COVID that helped keep this in the black as well. Moving forward, I would recommend, and it's in the budget, that we continue to support our food services budget, especially given the fact that one of the reasons this is in the black has to do with some of the COVID funding and some of the grants that are, that are written. But nonetheless, it's very encouraging. Again, after so many years in the red, to have FY21 be in the black and then have this year look like it's going to be in the black feels really good. Sat down with Mr. Grant today, actually. And again, what you, if you know anything about how the Performing Arts Center works, the big season is coming up and they're gearing up for it. So you'll notice while they are still in the red for revenues, both on the month and, yeah, both on the month and on the year-to-date, the expectation is that that's, that, that we're going to do just fine with the Performing Arts Center in terms of revenue. And then finally, the last enterprise account that we have is the adult education account. And that's sort of a quasi, because we get some revenue in there. But for, while the operating expenses for the month were in the red, a lot of that, again, has to do with when we, when we, when the revenue comes and when we journal that into the ledger. And so again, that, that account is doing, if you look the year-to-date percent, it's looking really quite good. So that's where we're at as of the end of January.
Any questions about that?
All right. The next thing I wanted to talk about has to do with energy costs. Oh, good. Look at that. It even came up. Don't look yet, though. Slide show. Play from start. See how that works? Oh, look at that. Okay, great. So this is the, the five-year average for natural gas prices. It's in, oh god, MMBT is mega whatever. It doesn't matter. It's a unit of energy that's, that's in the gas. If you look at the five-year average, you'll notice there are two peaks. One peak happened at the beginning of COVID-19, and the second peak happened in November. So what was going on? Well, I started in October 1, was finance director. And at some point in, in October, I learned that our natural gas and electricity contracts were about to expire in November. On November 4th, we had a, we had a finance committee meeting, and I let you guys know that this was happening. I was like, hey, guys, if you want me to lock in at the, at these high points here, because again, if we look back, you know, they're, they're truly unprecedented high points in, in the natural gas futures. By the way, I didn't give electricity in here, but electricity and natural gas follow each other because most of our electricity generation is natural gas-fired plants. So if you look at the natural gas, you know how much your electricity is going to be. And many of us know that our, our electricity bills at home have gone up because, well, because the cost of generation has gone up. So anyway, this is kind of where we were. We're in a conundrum, and this required a response from, from me. And I got to have a big shout-out to our friends at the city. I talked to Eric Dudley, who is a really smart guy about this stuff, and also did some research on energy futures. That's where I got these kind of charts. And spoke with several colleagues in the field about what they're doing and where they're at. And again, shared this with you guys to say, if you guys want me to lock, I'll do it, but I wouldn't do it at this time. And so again, our, our decision, right about there, looked like we were absolutely stunningly brilliant because it was going down, right? And here's the question, you know, can you see around a corner? Of course you can't. But then, of course, we know what happened. It's starting to go back up again. And of course, that inflection point corresponds to what's going on with the war. And again, that's affected the volatility of natural gas prices, as we all know at the pumps. It also has changed the, the volatility of gasoline prices or oil prices. And so again, what looked like it was a correcting issue having to do with COVID now is sort of hostage to geopolitical issues that are going on right now. Again, this is, you know, the decision looked really smart as we were at that point, but then the, the market totally destabilized. So I think the question that you guys really need to ask is, what should we do? And what are we going to do? This is a pretty, I mean, you know, when you can predict that something's going to be between around one point seven and four point five, that's a several hundred percent change. Like, I, I don't, you know, but I think what most people are thinking is that the market is going to settle in at somewhat less than what it is now. Now, moving forward, I think we need to have a plan for how we handle our energy. And I got to be really honest with you. I am not an energies, futures trader, nor do I want to be. That's not a skill set. I mean, I can do the research, but that's not, that's, you don't want me sitting at my desk every day looking at six screens of, of that that you saw earlier. And so I got in touch with, or actually, these guys got in touch with us, Best Energy Practices. These, and let me explain who these guys are and, and why I feel pretty good about, about these guys. They're an energy broker that's a lot like an insurance agent or an insurance broker who works with many different companies in order to get you your best rates. So they, they're the ones whose job it is to really look at energy futures and, and time purchases and, and be able to time those in, in, you know, in minutes and hours as opposed to, you know, how long it would take us. And really, because it's my job to mitigate risk, I think the idea of getting into multiple contracts. So what this company does is traditionally, what you do is you lock your price. So like, like, like you would do for your home heating oil, you'd lock your price for the season and say, I'm going to get it at two bucks for the rest of the season. That is a reasonable thing for your home, but for, for, for a, a school who, who has the fiduciary responsibility to the citizens, that's gambling, right? Like, that is gambling. Well, will it go lower? Will it go higher? I don't know. Maybe, maybe not. The, the better way to lock is to lock percentages. So you lock about ten percent at, at a low point, and if it goes up, you wait. And if it goes down, you know, you, you lock another twenty percent. And what you do is you stagger locking your energy futures over time so that you, again, so that you're not gambling on, I hope this is the lowest it's going to go. And so I got in touch with this group. The gentleman I'm working with right now, his, his name is Mike Feeley. I got to tell you, the coolest thing about him, and I'll, I'll give you the reason why I think we should, we should work with this organization, is his advice to me during this volatile time was, you'd be crazy to lock, okay? Now, I didn't get that from the people we came off of contract. I told you when we met on the 4th, the people we came off of contract were, were begging me to get another contract with them. They were begging me to lock in up there, okay? I got to tell you, by December, we would have looked pretty foolish having locked in up there. Now, don't get me wrong, right now, we looked pretty smart, but you know, again, what is this? This is, this is us, you know, I wonder which way the wheel's going to go. There are people who are much better at predicting that than, than you or I. So anyway, what I, I checked some references on this organization. They're a company out of Rhode Island, but they have a local guy, this Mike Feeley, I believe is a local person. And their job it is, it will be to work with me to determine when we should lock, what we should lock, and how much at each time. And the idea is to stagger that over time so that we're not gambling. So, again, I think the next steps are to contract with these guys in order to help them mitigate our risks. Because coming off of contract, I got to tell you, it was a heck of a shock starting this job, being told that we don't have our energy futures secured. We should, as an organization, try to do that as much as possible because what we want to do is predict our future, and when we lock in, we do that. When we lock in is when we do it, is gambling. When we have somebody else help us, it's gambling, but at least you got a card counter on your team.
And so, if we were to contract with them or partner with them, is there a cost associated with that?
So the cost comes off of the price. So they negotiate a price, and then they tell us what the price is, and their fee is the difference. And the contract is, and again, I'll work through that to make sure, and we probably need to run it by our attorneys just to make sure. But my understanding is it's a pretty soft contract. It's just saying, we're committed to working with you as long as it works for both of us.
So we won't be locked into anything?
I need to verify that, so I want to be really careful. And before I do anything, I'll make sure I at least, you know, shoot a communication in your direction. I'd like you, what I'd like really is for you guys to, I mean, in the past, the person in my role would have locked the prices and let you know that we locked them. I think, for me, this strategy is something I want to share with you guys and get your approval of that strategy. And I think we need to make sure that we can, you know, if it feels unfavorable, walk our way out of this. Again, like I said, I called a bunch of references. I called four different schools and felt really good. But I'll tell you, the biggest reference, honestly, was the fact that the people who we normally lock with were trying to get us to lock in during a really not advantageous time to lock in. And this guy was like, yeah, I wouldn't lock in now. You want to wait. You want to wait and see what's going to happen. In the spring, natural gas futures always generally go down because of the heating season. That's sort of a standard trend, so locking in the middle of winter doesn't make sense. I also love the idea of locking in for various distances or various terms over, you know, and in different segments. So like, not all of it locked in. 20% of our natural gas at one point. Having them have different deadlines will keep us from having what we had in November of this year, which was, sorry, you want to re-up, you can, you know? And I would say one other thing, the people that we locked in with, I don't know if they communicated with the district, but long before we were about to go up, we should have gotten some correspondence from them. That's the kind of customer service we should be getting.
It seems like things are so volatile right now that I think I'm favorable to meeting with somebody and getting that advice because things are changing so rapidly.
Is this just for natural gas?
This is electricity and natural gas.
What about our fuel?
We do our fuel, you're talking about transportation fuel. We do that with the city, a shared contract with the city.
And are we locked in on that?
Oh, gosh. Is she here? No. I think that's being renegotiated with the city because if I recall correctly, we had a conversation about what the appropriate amount to budget for our transportation department was. I met with Melissa on this issue. I just honestly can't remember the details. Budget season, man, there's been a lot of numbers.
So you don't know if they locked in to a price?
I think they're locked in right now, and I think it gets renegotiated in the summertime. But again, don't quote me on that. I want to be careful. You know, people are watching, like, no, that's not, I don't know exactly. I just know that right now, our fuel prices have been very reasonable, and I know that that's, we work with the city on that, and I know that there's something changing. I just don't know the details.
Yeah, if you can find that out by the next meeting.
I absolutely can.
If we are locked in to a new contract, and if not, why? And if not, when are we going to get locked into a new price?
I'm sorry, I missed the last part of that?
If we're not, when are we going to get locked in at a new price?
Oh, okay. So you want the whole story of what we're doing for our fuel?
Yeah, because right now, the cost for fuel is high.
Oh, gosh, yes.
So I don't know if they're going to be locking at a high price, if they have not locked in now, by now.
I believe for this current fiscal year, they are locked in. The city is locked in, and I believe we contract with the city, actually, I know we do, for our fuel.
So we can get a feeling for what it'll be going forward?
Right.
Yep. And I know that we have, right now, the negotiated price is alarmingly low, which is nice.
That was last year's price, right?
I'm sorry, last year. Yeah, what, our current fiscal year for fuel.
Are other districts using similar representation?
I love that you asked that question because that was mine, too. It was like, what is everyone else doing? And so, I called several of the districts that are connecting with them. It's a pretty new company. It's, I did some research on them, and it's a pretty new company, but the references that I called seem very favorable. I also talked to Eric Dudley with the city, and he actually said, hey, Brian, you know, take a look at that. Maybe the city can get involved in this with you guys as well. So he seemed pretty interested in the idea of going through a broker as well.
Any other questions about any of that part?
Thank you.
And then, so on to the revolving renovation fund process? Is that where we want to go next?
I'm on a roll. I have no slides for this. All right. So here's where we're at with the revolving renovation fund. I've been in touch with the folks at the city. Suzanne Knight and I have had a couple of conversations, as well as Trastina. We, what we need to do, basically, so, and I've also had conversations with the state. There's a couple of different ways to do it, but our plan is to go out to bond for the full amount of the project. What's cool about that, if you recall, it's a 10-year bond, of which the state of Maine pays, I want to say it's 52%, but I might be wrong about that. It's close to 50%, pays all of that and pays all of the interest. So it's a zero-interest 10-year loan. We had toyed with the idea of using the remainder, remaining funds from the school construction project, but in the end, like, that makes no financial sense. A zero-interest 10-year loan, if anyone wants to offer me one of those, I'll take it. And so, that's exactly where we're at in terms of, in terms of this. You'll notice is in the budget during, in the budget, in the, under the section of, oh, gosh, debt service, you'll see those, the payments for principal only for those, whereas we have to pay the principal and interest for our other debt service. It's a wicked good deal. We are in the process of looking to go out to bid for our water, a water project. That was the high school water project. The second part, we are looking at our current contractors to see if the remainder, the second phase to the high school project that is in the revolving renovation fund counts as sort of a continuation of work and therefore, we don't have to go out to bond. We did get confirmation from the state of Maine that if it's a continuation of work, we don't. And for our low voltage especially, that truly is because that's pretty complicated. But it may be for all of them. It depends on, again, whether or not the quotes that they gave us at the beginning of the project for the entire project are still good. If they're not, if they don't honor those contracts, we'll have to go out to bid for those. And that should be happening pretty soon because we want that work to happen this summer.
Can you remind me again of what work will be encompassed under that?
I can. So the revolving renovation for the high school was all the low voltage wiring that's already been done and will be done in Phase 2. It also includes all the Phase 2 electrical work, fire, not suppression, but fire mitigation work, and any of the additional costs that go along with that in terms of management. So it's really finishing up the high school, what we did on the part that was in the fire, we want to do on the rest of the building. The second one had to do with the fact that there is a hot water issue in terms of delivery system, all kinds of things at the high school. In that project, we do need to go out to bid. We haven't started. We haven't looked at that. So that was the second part. The total of both, I believe, is somewhere in the area of about $750,000.
So we just wanted to make sure that the finance committee knew this, and it can be reported to the school committee, that we will be going to the city council to request that be part of the bond issuance for both of these projects. But as Brian explained, these are terrific ways of getting work done at a really reasonable cost.
And so, so we've already been approved for some money from the revolving renovation. So what is the bond process? We still have to go out to bond even though it's part of the revolving renovation?
So the revolving renovation basically allows a district to, what the state's responsibility is, they will take care of, if the project is, let's say the project's $500,000, and let's just go 50, we're a 50% receiver, they will pay $250,000 of that bond, and they will pay the interest on the $250,000. That's our responsibility for the 10 years of that bond, that we're paying on that bond.
So they're just basically saying that we're responsible for this amount of this money, so we'll go out to bond to get the full amount. They'll pay for a part, and then we'll have to pay for a part.
Exactly.
Okay. Makes sense. Any questions about that process or those projects? That'll be great to get those done. Okay. Thank you, Brian. All right, and on to budget.
All right. So, you know, on the first day of school, you know, there's the old essay, what did you do over your summer vacation? Well, this is what the leadership team's been doing since Thanksgiving, really developing the proposal for the FY23 budget, among other things that we've been managing as well. But I am pleased to present to the finance committee the leadership team's proposal for FY23's budget. Just in terms of a little bit of housekeeping, the budget proposal will be published to the website in two different ways. One in its entirety, all 500 pages continuous. You have those in the front of your very thick binders if you'd rather just go through the entire budget in one fell swoop. And will also be posted in those binders by Cost Center. So you can see Canal School, the WRVC, et cetera, is broken out as Cost Center. So you can see it in two different ways. Same budget, broken out into two different ways. So a school budget is something that is a very concrete example of how a school community fulfills its mission and how it provides for its students in a very concrete way. A budget always tells a story, and the story of this budget has to do with all of our learners. As you saw last month when I presented the State of the Schools report, the complexity of our student body, of our community, continues to grow and change. And in terms of the work that we're doing with Equity, we want to make sure that we're supporting the needs of all of our learners in all of our schools, from pre-K through adult learners. So the theme of our FY23 budget is supporting the success of all learners. There's another document that I've given you paper copies of, and it will also be published on the website, that's a narrative of the budget proposal. So you can, again, see these slides. The slides will go up as well, but the thinking behind the slides will be there, and there'll be some more specific details in that document. But in terms of supporting all of our students, the budget that we're proposing is designed to meet those needs. Students are at the very center of our work. Students are at the very center of our attention, and they need to stay there. They need to be the very heart of the work that we do. There are four areas that we're looking at in terms of telling the story of our budget and organizing our budget. First is in equity and opportunity. Another is in teaching, learning, and leading our schools. As foundational pieces, we're looking at human resources, our employees, who work directly with students, as well as those who work across the school district, and our operations, the backbone of our schools. So let me talk about each of those as we go through. But let's start with the number. At this point, the budget that you have received totals $44,313,823.51. That represents an increase of 5.9% over last year's expenditures. So there's an increase of $2,473,563.21 over the FY22 budget that was approved last year. The state's share is listed on the screen as well, $19,976,325. And that comes directly from the EPS model, the Essential Programs and Services model, from our ED279, the state subsidy. That compared with our local share, the local share is $24,337,498.51, and that represents just over a 7% increase to the local share of FY23. That's the request. And I just want to make note that last year, the FY23 local share was actually decreased by $205,276 due to the increased state subsidy that was received after legislative action that the school committee appropriated to the city council to use for tax relief that was part of Mayor Foley's proposal in last year's budget. So when we started to develop the budget, let me give you a sense of where we began. We began with a needs-based budget that was submitted collaboratively by all of our leadership team, and our leadership team consists of our school principals and assistant principals, our academic directors, our operations directors. Our entire team looked at their schools, worked with their staff to determine what needs were. And they submitted requests that totaled over $46 million, which would have represented better than a 10% increase. Knowing that that figure would not be something I could support or that we could support, I wouldn't recommend supporting, we needed to make some reductions, and we've done that in the amount of $1.8 million of reductions. When we asked our administrators to make the reductions, we asked them to think creatively and to think constructively, and to see if there were any expenses that were requested and that were deemed essential that could be funded in other sources than the general fund. Were there other grants, for example, that could fund certain materials, certain services, certain staff members, including the title grants, or including the ESIR, the Emergency Relief Funds, the Perkins Grant for vocational, or other grants? We asked if there were other ways to pay for these requests other than the general fund. We also asked if there were things that could be deferred for a year or not funded, or were less of a priority as we moved through. And we were able to reduce a considerable amount to come to our final figure that we have tonight. So let's talk about some of these initiatives and inclusions in the budget that helped to frame our story and helped to frame what the budget is focusing on. The first area is our equity and opportunity work. We're very proud of the hard work that all of our school department has done over the last several years to focus on equity and opportunity for all of our students. We've begun to dismantle systems of inequity. We've focused on social justice. We've focused on student voice. We've really leaned in to difficult conversations that promote equity and opportunity at the school committee level and throughout all of our schools. We all should be very proud of that work. Our equity leadership group... Our Equity Leadership Group continues to do some fantastic work, as does our Equity Resource Coordinator, Amanda Atkinson-Lewis, who you'll hear from at the School Committee meeting with an update on the work that's going on. And in order to provide for those kinds of activities, that kind of professional development, that kind of focus, we've included some funds to support that. As part of our work in collaboration with the City of Westbrook, we've really focused on One Westbrook, which is our initiative to create and sustain a truly equitable, just community here in the city and in the schools. Amanda facilitates that group. Part of her time in this role as the Equity Resource Coordinator, we've allocated for her to facilitate One Westbrook. And we have included in our budget a request for some funding for One Westbrook of $3,000, which is being matched with a request in the municipal budget. So One Westbrook will have some funds available to it to provide opportunities for collaboration across the different communities in the city, will provide opportunities for people and communities to get to know each other and to really lean into this work of equity. Similarly, we are budgeting some funds to recreate, in some ways, the Westbrook Children's Project and to sustain that. The grant funding for the Children's Project has been discontinued, so we are looking to have a small amount of grassroots funding to sustain that as something that's essential, especially among our early learners, really focusing on our early childhood education and out-of-school-time education. So all of those are part of our equity and opportunity initiatives, along with social and emotional learning, which also falls under the equity and opportunity. One of our primary missions is teaching and learning here in the district, and there are some specific areas that are highlights in this year's budget. One, we are proposing a new elementary math program that Dr. O'Donnell presented at the Ed Programs Committee last month, and we'll mention that again tonight. A new program for K through five mathematics, designed to address the needs in mathematics. We've seen a decline in math achievement at our elementary schools for several years. A new approach is needed, and we need to fund that new approach. The cost of classroom consumable supplies has increased, in part because of supply, and we need to be able to address that. We're sustaining our libraries. For several years, we've had reductions in our library budgets. We've not done that this year. In fact, we've increased the per pupil allocation for library books to be at the ALA recommended level, so that we are providing fresh, current, engaging materials for our students in our libraries. We're sustaining and reallocating some funds into the Unified Arts and our stellar music and art programs, as well as our STEAM initiatives and our PE programs, because the Unified Arts are a significant part, an important part, of the work that we do in our schools. And finally, in special education, as we saw in the State of the Schools report, the number of special needs students continues to climb in our district, including the number of students who require out-of-district placements in special purpose programs for all or part of their day. The costs of special purpose programs have increased quite a bit, and the numbers of students have continued to sustain at a fairly high level. So we've increased funding for out-of-district placement in our special education programming. In our Human Resource Department, we're focused on creating and sustaining the very best faculty and staff in the state. In order to do that, we need to be able to take care of our employees, as well as manage the systems that take care of our employees. So we are including in part of our emergency funding, new software for human resources that will allow us to have online applications for jobs, which will really help in our recruiting process. There's a product called Apple Trax, which many school districts in the area use. We don't use that currently, and we need to, in order to stay competitive, so that we can attract high-quality candidates to the Westbrook schools. Part of employee support is not just recruiting them, but supporting them in order to retain them. So the software also provides for our professional growth and evaluation system, the management of that system that supports all of our staff. There are salary increases in this year's budget that are contractual. FY23 will be the second of three years for our teachers and our support staff collective bargaining agreements, which have a 2% increase in them for this coming school year, in both of those contracts. When you read through the actual budget and you look at the difference between FY22 and 23, the increases of salaries will look like they're pretty high. They'll look like they were a double increase. The reason it looks that way is that the contracts were not settled during our budget season last year. So there was a line item under the district costs for negotiated contract adjustments. So those increases were absorbed into that line item. Now they're actually factored into each individual employee's salary for teachers and support staff. So if you see a salary, you think, wow, that's a huge raise, that's a huge step. It's because it really reflects two years, whereas this current year was reflected in the negotiated contracts amount. We have not yet received an estimate of benefit increases or our benefit costs for next year, so we've budgeted at 10% as a potential increase to our benefits cost. And finally, we have been looking at substitute costs, and as Dr. Mazianis said earlier, our sub-costs look fairly okay this year, in part because we're able to charge some of our substitutes to our emergency funding, but also because we don't have very many substitutes right now. So here's a plug for more substitutes. If anyone would like to sub in the Westbrook schools, please come see us, we can make it happen. One of the blessings of the pandemic has been our designated building subs, the consistent subs at each of our buildings, so that principals and administrative assistants are not scrambling first thing in the morning to know if they can find a sub for a certain class. We designate certain people to certain buildings every day, so that if there is an absence, they can fill in, and if there isn't an absence, they can be reallocated someplace else or into other roles. We found that that was very helpful in the last two years. We'd like to continue that. So we've included some designated building substitutes in the general fund to establish that in the general fund. Some are also being budgeted under the ESER funds, because they still will be allowable because they respond to the pandemic. There are a few new positions that we are proposing to the general fund. First is a kindergarten teacher for Congan School. For the last several years, we've been monitoring kindergarten numbers, and we've been trying to fill classroom positions at the last minute. So it's time to actually request another permanent teacher in our kindergartens at Congan School in response to the enrollments that have been a pattern of increased enrollments. It wasn't just a one- or two-year fluke, it's something that is sustaining. We'd also like to request a second STEAM teacher at Westbrook Middle School. STEAM is Science, Technology, Engineering, the Arts, and Mathematics. As you know, we have a K-12 STEAM initiative that is incredibly successful. All of our elementary kids have a weekly STEAM class as part of their curriculum. Some of our middle school students are able to have STEAM at the middle level. We would like more of them to have STEAM at the middle level. These are in addition to their regular science class, but really focus on hands-on, engineering-based, technical activities that are designed to engage and promote the application of the STEAM subjects in their daily lives. This, we're seeing pay off in the number of students who are enrolling in STEAM-related programs at WRVC, as well as the number of kids that are enrolling in STEAM-related subjects at Westbrook High School. Science continues to be the most popular discipline that's requested at Westbrook High School, and I'm so thrilled about that. And so many kids are going into STEM careers because they've been taught well here in the Westbrook schools. So this additional STEAM teacher will help us to expand that initiative, so that more middle schoolers can participate in STEAM classes. Our English Language Program continues to expand with a number of English Language learners in the district, particularly our newcomers, again, as we talked about in the State of the Schools report, which is also posted on our website. You can go to that to see what the data was for that. We're requesting an additional EL teacher at Sacorappa School and an additional EL teacher at Westbrook Middle School to support the growing needs of our learners, district-wide, but particularly at those two buildings. These requests are also in line with a multi-year plan that has been proposed by our Director of English Language Programs, Regina Clement, to eventually be at the state recommendation in terms of staffing ratios for English Language learners. It's a four-year plan, I believe, I think Regina's in the audience, a three-year plan, to get us to where we should be in terms of what the state recommends. So these two additions would be a significant movement toward that. And again, our special education population continues to expand, particularly at the elementary level with our incoming kindergarteners. And in other commercial, if you have a kindergartner for next fall, please come to our virtual open house tomorrow evening, the link is on the website, and sign up for kindergarten so we can have an accurate number of kids. But we're looking to add another special ed teacher at the elementary level to address particularly needs in our Functional Life Skills Program. Many of our students coming into K come with what's called Child Developmental Services as part of an IEP, and we need to be able to support them, we're required to support them. And we're requesting an additional special education teacher for Westbrook High School. As the elementary and middle school children grow, they come to high school, and our programs need to be able to meet their needs as well. And in addition, we are now able to, and students are now able to, through their IEP, remain at high school longer than their 18th birthday, I believe until the age of 22 now. So we need to be able to respond to that need if they are in IEPs. Leadership is an important part of the work that we do, and we are requesting some leadership positions as part of the general fund. We're asking to add an assistant principal at Sacorappa School. Right now, Sacorappa School has one principal and a half-time administrator, with a title administrator, who also shares responsibility as an Assistant Director of Special Education, managing the Spring Harbor Hospital program and out-of-district placements. We did that when Sacorappa School expanded a few years ago, to see if that model would work in terms of leadership, in terms of managing students, in terms of supporting staff. That hasn't worked as effectively as it needs to be, because there needs to be more capacity. The people in those positions are fantastic. We need more support, we need more capacity at the schools. So the ask is actually for a half-time assistant principal to couple with the half-time administrator for the building, to create one full-time assistant principal. Similarly, at our other elementary schools, we need that assistant principal support as well. We're asking for a .4 or a two-day-a-week assistant principal at Canal, to couple with a three-day-a-week or a .6 assistant principal at Congan. This team of assistant principals across our elementary schools would focus squarely on teaching and learning, on intervention systems for students, on helping students, helping teachers support differentiation in their classrooms, and helping to manage IEPs and 504s, really focusing in very laser-like focus on student success academically and socially and emotionally, a very targeted role of that assistant principal at both of those schools. So the ask is for essentially one full-time assistant principal, so that Sacorappa would have a full-time assistant principal, Canal would have a two-day-a-week, Congan would have a three-day-a-week assistant principal. And finally, an additional .5 Assistant Director of Special Education. This is expanding the role of the part-time Spring Harbor Hospital administrator, because the number of our out-of-district placements, there are group homes in the city that we manage IEPs for, there's the Spring Harbor Hospital that we manage the educational programming for, there are a number of students who require really intense special services that require administrative support and leadership in that department. So we would be asking to increase that as well.
I have a question.
Yes.
Were some of these positions in last year's budget, and were taken out?
So the administrator, the Sacorappa Assistant Principal was proposed-
Okay.
-and was taken out. I don't remember exactly when it was taken out, Mrs. Schultz, but it was something that has been proposed in the past.
Okay, thanks.
Now, there are some positions, as you know, we were able to fund several positions through the emergency fund, through the ESERF funding. And we've looked at all of those and tried to look at which ones, we've already evaluated to be essential positions, not necessarily the people in the positions, this isn't about evaluation of staff, this is about the efficacy of the position. And we've already determined that there are some that are absolutely essential that we need to maintain moving forward, not just related to pandemic recovery, but moving forward. And some of those, we'd like to move into the general fund this coming school year in FY23. One is a social worker for Sacorappa School and Westbrook Middle School, working between the two buildings, supporting, mainly supporting children with IEPs, with social work in their IEPs. We were able to expand the position of the library ed techs at the three elementary schools to library teachers under the ESERF funds. We'd like to bring them into the full budget, into the general fund budget permanently. This was really significant in our teaching and learning plan, our recovery plan for academics, because literacy across the curriculum is absolutely foundational, and the libraries in our schools are absolutely the center of teaching and learning in our schools. Having teacher-level librarians in those positions, as we do at the middle school, as we do at the high school, has been essential, and has really changed the nature of the library program, has changed the ways that students access resources and services, and has changed the way that our librarians interact with teachers and staff. Those have already been very successful, and we'd like those to continue in the general fund moving forward. And finally, there is an accountant position that we included in the ESERF funds. It continues to remain unfilled. We've had two rounds of posting of that and have been unsuccessful, and it continues to be posted, but that's something that is absolutely essential to our Finance Department in completing the work of the Finance Department on a daily basis. Dr. Mazianis has done a brilliant job these last few months organizing the Finance Department, but that accountant is a piece that is seriously, continues to be needed, and that's something we'd like to move into general fund. There are some that we've determined to be essential, that we would like to continue, that we were hoping to have in the FY23 proposal, but we're leaving in the ESERF funds for this year. So this slide is kind of coming at traction, so you'll see this in the FY24 proposal, because these are necessary. We'd like to reclassify our ed tech nurses to professional contract nurses, in part to be able to provide salaries that are compensatory with their skills and their needs and the work that they do in our schools, as well as our ability to recruit and retain nurses into our positions. All of these, by the way, were listed in ESERF as two-year positions, so they can stay there in those positions. Also, again, at the Finance Department, an executive assistant in the Finance Department, designated for the Finance Department, another essential piece to our financial management, particularly with all of the grants that we have, including the ESERF grant, but all of the other federal grants, to help support management of those, and working and interacting with all of the other staff within that department. Similarly, an administrative assistant in transportation, to support the needs of that department, to support the training of our bus drivers and the organization of our transportation staff, support and service, customer service to our families, another necessary position. And then our consistent or our designated building substitutes, we're including some of those in the general fund, but we would like to, in total, budget it for eight more, so that we can have designated people in our buildings every day, providing some support when there are absences. Other positions that will remain in ESERF that we have not yet determined if we need to bring them forward at some point, they're listed in that narrative document, you can see which ones those are. But those, we'll continue to evaluate the efficacy of those over the course of the next year. So, and under operations, another area that we're- So, and under operations, another area that we're looking at, helping to tell our story, that supports the needs of our students, kind of from the background in many ways. As Dr. Masianis described a little while ago, our utility costs, we're watching those carefully and worried about those carefully. We need to be able to manage those, but we have increased projected, we've included a projected increase of costs for our utilities in the budget. Our school nutrition program is doing very well this year, and fortunately, throughout the state of Maine, children will all eat for free in our schools. And thank you to everybody who has supported that and advocated for that. It's absolutely a must. However, we are still going to budget an amount of funds to support any debt that would happen in the school nutrition program. We've been doing that the last couple of years, and we'll continue to do that this year, as most schools do. The school nutrition department in most school systems runs at a deficit, as we see, and the general fund is responsible for covering that so that the program can run effectively. We'll continue to request a new bus every year as part of our ongoing, our ongoing program of replacing buses and upgrading our fleet of buses. Our fleet is in very good shape, and we want to maintain that good shape of our buses by replacing those on a regular cycle. And looking at our facilities, you know, looking at the cost of simple break-fix within our schools and simple day-to-day construction, simple day-to-day maintenance. We are also looking at some ways to address capital needs. We'll talk about in a second, but we are maintaining and in some ways increasing our cost for facility maintenance in our budgets. So, speaking of capital improvement, we're very pleased to have a very active facilities committee. So thank you to the school committee for establishing that and to Mr. McGowan for chairing that and others for being part of that committee. It's a very active committee. And one of the tasks or one of the accomplishments so far, we have a comprehensive capital improvement plan. It's not a set-in-stone plan necessarily. It's fluid in terms of priorities, in terms of needs, and we're touring the different facilities now to get a sense of a state of the schools physically at each of our school facilities and our buildings. We have not included capital improvement fund requests in the general fund. Instead, we have been working with the city administration and with Mayor Foley to look at joining the city's capital improvement plan, to include a number of our prioritized items in the capital improvement plan of the city, or working with the city to bond for a significant number of improvements. We're in the process of gathering quotes and bids for different projects, projects that include a facility study for the Westbrook High School complex, as well as windows for different buildings, and replacing ceilings at Canal School, fixing drainage issues at Canal School, removing out-of-date boilers, installing new lighting, a number of essential capital items that we need to be addressing at some point in the future. So this is kind of a to-be-continued, but we're looking at those two options in terms of funding our priorities for capital improvement, either through the city's capital improvement plan or looking to bond on a significant amount in order to address all of our projects at once. So when we look at revenue, here is a, here is a projection of what the revenue is for FY '23. As you can see, our state subsidy comes directly from the ED279, and that does reflect the 55% share that was, that was created by the legislature and has been allocated by Governor Mills.
Just, I was gonna talk about this. I wanted to make sure everybody knows. We don't actually get 55%. We actually get 48%.
Where, yes. Is that, is that the number I gave you?
Yeah, 48%.
I know I gave you the right one from the ED279, yes.
And what's interesting is, so the state's paying their 55%, but not everybody receives the same amount. So we get 48%. Some communities, like Cape Elizabeth, I believe, get nothing or little to nothing. It depends on a lot of things.
They're the minimum, they're a minimum receiver.
Minimum receiver. So they get no money from the state. So it's, it's interesting how that works. So it makes it sound like every community in Maine gets 55% of their education. They don't. But we definitely get a good amount of money compared to some.
I think the other thing, again, and we talked about this in the finance committee meeting, two things. One is, yeah, they fund the entire state's education at 55%, but each community. What that does is allows them to set a mill rate. The other part about EPS formula is that it's a floor. It's essential, meaning you can't really do school without these things, but they don't include some of the things that make school really important, like athletics and other things, like music and that kind of thing. So, you know, yeah, it's not exactly 55%. And EPS was never meant to be the target for how much you should spend on your schools. It was just a way to figure out state funding.
Thank you for clarifying that because EPS is, some brilliant person invented that, and it makes it work.
Yeah.
But we're fortunate that the state is living up to what is expected-
Absolutely.
...to do. And we're very grateful for that. But as a significant receiver, we do receive almost half of our funding from the state. You can see some other revenues. Athletic gate receipts are a projection, miscellaneous income, the E-rate with our technology, adult education revenues, as well as transportation revenues. This is, this is an exciting one because we have a service agreement. We have an MOU with the Sebego schools. We actually service their vehicles for them, and they pay us an amount of money. Some of these are projections. Some of them are, I think, a little bit low in terms of projection. Like, I think the adult education revenue will be actually higher because we're seeing an increased activity in our adult ed program. But these are conservative amounts of what we're projecting as revenue. Rather than inflate what we hope revenue will be, this is a more realistic view. We're also, this year, not including a carry-forward amount as revenue. Every year is part of our budgeting process and part of our spending process. We end the year on June 30th typically with some carry-forward. That's typical, and we're fortunate to have been able to do that. However, through very careful budgeting over the years, that carry-forward has become smaller and smaller because we're being more exact in what we spend, which is good. To include projected carry-forward as revenue is risky because if you have it, great. If you don't have it, then you have a hole to fill. And we want to avoid filling any holes in our revenue sources.
Yeah, I mean, for example, this year, we budgeted $300,000 for carry-forward, and our carry-forward number was $275,000. So again, we started the year off in a deficit. Now, again, the budget isn't so tight in a $42 million budget that that's going to be the end-all, but it's a concern. It also represents, and we talked about this too, one of those financial cliffs. If you can count on it every year, great, but you can't, and you probably shouldn't be able to count on it every year. And those, I think, are really to be avoided in revenues. In years past, we also used, what did we call it? The debt stabilization fund. We use some of the funds that were left out, that we bonded for the school construction projects as part of debt stabilization. Those are one-time funds too, and they represent actually sort of a concern as we try to address the budget. I think this is a very honest look at what our revenue is, and I think it's also conservative. And I think that's, that's important to be when we're budgeting.
So again, you can see what our total revenue projection is, coupled with the requested local appropriation, and that's where we get our final amount for FY '23. So this overview is just that. It's an overview. The finance committee and others will be spending a lot of time together over the next month scrutinizing the budget. The plan is to review each of our cost centers, line by line, as has been our custom in the city. Committee members, I hope, will ask questions. People in the community can ask questions for clarification. Dr. Masianis, Dr. O'Donnell, and I will provide that clarification as quickly as we can for you. There may be some things that you want to move on to what we call the revisit list, things you want more information on, things that you're not sure of yet. You want to know if we should include that or not include that, if we need to include something else or something in addition. We'll allocate those to a separate night where we'll talk about revisit items. But when we go through each of the cost centers, again, I encourage all of you, finance committee members, as well as other school committee members, people in the public, to ask questions. All of those meetings will be held here at the Performing Arts Center live, but also on Facebook Live and on Zoom so that people can watch live or they can watch recorded and, again, interact. Another blessing, I guess, from the pandemic has been the success of virtual meetings. We're all tired of virtual meetings, but people have been more engaged than they ever have before in our process, and I hope that continues with FY '23. So having those multiple platforms, I hope, will be very, very helpful. So the plan is to review the cost centers. There are three meetings scheduled next week, next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Then a couple weeks after that, there's a, there's a snow date, just in case. Let's hope we don't have to deal with that. But there's also time for the revisit meeting, and then there will be a special school committee meeting the first Wednesday of April that includes the budget hearing. And then hopefully the school committee will be ready to adopt the FY '23 budget at their regular meeting next month in April, and then it would be, then it will go on to the city council for their consideration of deliberation for May adoption, and finally, we'll go to the voters as part of the budget validation process in June. So happy reading of the budget.
Easy, easy. Did we have any questions about that presentation and what we're looking at for our budget schedule, review schedule going forward? Everybody's just shell-shocked. That's what it is. So much information.
Well, there's no, no money for capital projects included in this budget because we're working with the city. Is there a figure or a number if the city has established that they're willing to, that we have to spend, that we know, or there, if there's items that we need taken care of and they reject, how would we then fund those?
So at this point, no, there isn't an exact amount that we've been given or, you know, a threshold. We're working through that process now.
Threshold, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah. There is the remaining funds from the Saccharapa Middle School building projects. It's about $700,000.
Just over $700,000.
Some of that will be required to finish the reconstruction of the high school, but that is also available for some of our more immediate projects. And we're also, you know, we're looking at some of the projects in that capital list to see if there are options. Last month, we talked about the Westbrook Middle School HVAC system and the need to replace that. In the interim, we've been talking with some other consultants and some other people from outside of our general contractors who've worked with the system for a long time to see if there are alternatives. So we're looking at creative ways to take care of things, but also not to Band-Aid things. You know, we need to address some things now and move forward. So that's going to be our, our hope moving forward and our request as we, as we kind of settle on that list of things that would go to either bond or to the city's plan.
Okay.
Right. I'm just very mindful that your original budget was totally needs-based. So that was based on what teachers and administrators said that they really need, and then you reduced that another, what, 46? I don't know. No. 20, 205,000 or something. Yeah, so it was. So will we ever see the list of those reductions that were already made?
Yes, you'll see some of those in this document.
Okay, got it. Okay, thanks.
And if there are others. And a number of the reductions, honestly, were reorganizations to see.
Okay, got it.
Our charge, our ask to the principals and administrators was to look at other funding sources, to see if, if we could look at other allowable costs to provide what we needed. Mindful that we don't want to create a cliff someday, but are we able to fund like first time, like one-time expenses? Here's an example. There was a, there was a request for considerable technology for our projections in the schools, our screens, a one-time cost before we go into a replacement cycle. That's something that's very allowable under ESER funds. So rather than funding it through the general fund or, you know, spreading it out over 10 years, better to take care of it now through that one-time expense, not create a cliff. We'll have to build in a replacement cycle, but that's something that we can build in more gradually later. So we've looked at some options. So the reductions are not just straight cuts. You can't have them. Many are reallocations.
Thanks.
Any other questions about any of that? So two things to follow up on as we wrap up. One thing I asked, Nori and I asked Peter so that we can look at that school committee line item in the budget. Maybe we can have Christian go over that so we can talk more about that and explain that further to make sure you understand that and we're all on the same page. And then the information about gas prices, we'll, with the city, and find out, you know, what their plan is for locking in, where we're at and all that.
I just saw Melissa here, so I bet I'll have an answer in minutes.
Minutes away. There she is. All right, so maybe we'll have that. Is there anything else anybody wants to follow up on or? All right. Well, that's a wrap for our finance meeting, and we'll be back here at 7:00 for school quitting.